Ethan, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. What's on the agenda? Minutes, April 25, 2013, both to pay bills and payroll.
Just one comment on the agenda. I wanted to just add the first reading to rescind policies FAE and FB missed the agenda.
Oh, on this agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda and the consent.
I'm sorry, go back a sec. So, the first reading you want to add?
I want to add, first reading to rescind FAE and FB, they missed the agenda packet.
Okay, that's right.
Excuse me.
All right. All right, I'll take the motion then on the consent agenda.
Make a motion on the consent agenda, modification to tonight's agenda is read.
Second. Any other discussion, or the favor?
Aye.
Interested citizens? Okay, all right. If I may, we're going to depart just a little bit before Kelly gets into his piece. Ethan, would you come on up front, please?
Ethan has been our school representative for the last year, and tonight is his last meeting. He's going to be going to the University of Mass, Amherst, where he's going to major in business, sports management also, is that right?
Correct.
So, certainly we've got high hopes for him there, and he served us very well, and more importantly, he served the students of the community very well in his representation. Kept the school committee and the administration very informed, this is what was going on, and was a vibrant and often very, very good discussions that he would bring up for us. But certainly the participation was much appreciated. And in recognition, Ethan, we'd like to give you a plaque, recognition of Ethan Duckney, High School Representative for Littleton School Committee, 2012, 2013. And I'd like to personally thank you very, very much for what you did, and wish you the best and luck.
Well. Good job, good luck.
Good job, Ethan.
Kelly, if you'd like to add anything?
A couple of things. Ethan, just wanted to just say a few things. As a superintendent, I thoroughly enjoyed having you as a student representative to the school committee. You've brought something to this table. You've been very informative, you've contributed to our discussions, you've been an advocate for education, advocate for your student council, and for me, it was always a very proud, proud moment to have you at this table. You represented not only the school well, but our school district well. So, thank you for your commitment, and best of luck to you, and best wishes as you continue your education next year.
Thank you.
I just, you have one question that's the important one. Who takes your place as Director of Basketball Operations?
Unfortunately, the person who will decide that isn't here at the moment. But as far as replacing this seat, I was going to do it during my school address, but I'm happy to do this now. We started accepting court-to-court applications for this spot, actually for all five positions on the Student Advisory Council, as we have five seniors on that this year. So far, we've received 13 applications for those five spots, and we asked, as part of it, we asked for people to indicate whether or not they would like to be in consideration for the student representative position, for the person to be sitting here, and 11 of those 13 had indicated that they would like the seat that I will hold through tonight's meeting. So, there are certainly options, and a lot of very strong options, a lot of kids that are very good speakers, very, very thoughtful in their approach, and a lot of kids that would be very good advocates for the Students' Department.
Excellent. Acknowledgements, please.
In your package, I had two acknowledgements in reference to our high school world language students. Our Latin students wrote a Latin national exam and entered very, very well. We had 27 Latin students, 14 from a middle school that earned national recognition. The exam is administered in March. Over 154,000 students take this exam in the United States and also 15 foreign countries. This year, 41 out of 73 Littleton students who took the exam received recognition for outstanding achievement. Again, this is, certainly goes hand in hand with the need to take a look at assessments outside the, our territory or New England states, so to speak, just to see how well we compete with other countries and other states. It's very pleasing to see the accomplishments of these young men and women, and certainly also a credit to our world language department. We also had Spanish students take a national exam this year, and it was written on two days, April 1st and 2nd. We had 107 students that participated in the exam. We had eight that received gold, 22 received silver, and 17 received bronze medals, along with 40 honorable mentions. Again, this exam encompasses 156,000 students in total writing them, so quite proud of the achievements of our students.
Hold on, please, I'll actually...
I will. Third recognition this evening, including Ethan, would be to take this opportunity to thank our community for supporting our mission and vision of our school district. They did that through voting our budget through at our town meeting. As a superintendent, very appreciative of the support that we have, and looking forward to utilizing that money as planned and continuing to move student learning forward in the next year.
Thank you for that. Surely, the folks in town did step up, as they always do. It was a very good town meeting, and they saw the benefits of our school district. We all know we want to make improvements on what we do here, but at least we're in the right direction.
Exactly.
And the Latin and Spanish exams, two manifestations of that. So, well done. Very true.
Okay. Now, we were going to get PNBC rep, but not seeing him right now. Rich, do you want to do your presentation?
Sure.
Yeah, it's actually a video presentation this evening, and then after, we've shown it, Rich can certainly make a few comments. I believe Mrs. Maurice is on the schedule to come here this evening, but we'll see if she arrives prior to the end of the video.
It's a 10-minute video on what first graders know about iPads, and I'm going to let you sit back, watch the video. I think you're going to be amazed at what's been happening at Chaker Lane in first grade this year. One thing to know is this is a one-take video. This wasn't something that was rehearsed over and over again. So, and I'll talk a little bit afterwards.
Documentary.
My iPad's in like, you're doing all yours. Yeah, and I'll like, TV.
Yeah. First you tap on it, it opens, it's that.
You're going to show them how it closes, and that's all you have to do is click the home button and you're back to your home screen.
I'm going to have to find an app. I'm going to find Google. Google's called a lot, and it's called Chocula. I found, now I found Chocula. In the classroom, and there it is, now I can read.
We just send it back to our code, and I'm, and there's a QR code. I'm going to show you how to close the app with a fine finger pitch. All I have to do is put them down and close it, and you're back to your home.
How you put photos to run up. First I go to Google buddies, back-to-back rows, and then I try and find my picture, and there it is. Now I can turn myself into anything I want.
I should have to do what I've done before. I have to press the app, like, the map. When you go to classroom, then you open your classroom, and then you find your name, if it's already there, you don't have, you don't have to find your name, then you type in your pin number. And there, and then, and then, and then you'll just play extra numbers.
We use extra math on the iPad, and it helps us with our math facts, and I'm getting really good at it.
I have a picture of Julia, and it's basically her mom, and it's not her, and you just put it back. And now, switch the camera. Thank you.
Every day in meeting, we use iPads, and we use the apps on the picture frames, and we scroll to the left, and we type in the app on the picture frame, and we don't have to ask the teacher to, to help us spell it, because it's right on the picture frame.
I have folders for our learning apps, and we have folders for math apps, and fun apps, and learning apps, and it helps us find them better.
Every day when we're done with our learning apps, we can do fun apps, and we can pick anything from the fun apps, so we can have fun. And there's this app that me and Ava like, and it's called, what is it called again? The Music Sparkle. It's, it's Music Sparkle, and we use it, and it's this musical thing, and then it just makes cute music, and we really like it.
I'm going to show you how you're going to make a picture of yourself. Just going to take camera, and I'm going to just switch it around a lot, and then I'm going to pick it up, but it's going to be pretty hard if you can. Your finger might be in the way. Bye.
Can I go hard, Rich?
We're going to show you how to put your iPad screen on the TV. You do a four-finger lift, then swipe across, press the TV button, then press on, and then you, and you press the screen, and it'll come up on the TV.
After reading, now I'm going to find a handsome Gretel. And we can read, we can, we're reading it, and you can play with the, with the objects that are in there, and you like to find some.
I'm going to show you how to close your open apps. So, you have to take four fingers and press up, and then you press one of your apps, like, sort of this shape, but then you close the dots.
We're going to show you how to put stuff on the document. On the input board.
Oh, Jesus. Jesus.
And you can show the small scale and make it bigger as you need it. And you also show whatever it's on. How you can see how much percent charge you have with your iPad. It's right up at the top, and you might appear, and I'm also going to show you how you can charge an iPad. Everybody's going to plug it in. And it's going to plug into the wall. Not really going to show you, but that's what you do, but it's, as long as you plug it into the iPad card, it's there.
Well, as it happens, and what's here is just a reflection of what's happening all across Chaker Lane, and I really have to say that in seven months, the staff at Chaker Lane has done an incredible amount of work in integrating technology into what we do. But the teacher who did that particular video is here with us this evening, and that's Nancy Maurice, sitting over there modestly in the back of, in the back of the room. And what you saw in that video is what I see in her classroom all the time. And Nancy and Julie Lord, who is our technology assistant, have really led the way at Chaker Lane into us integrating technology into what we're doing. Every Tuesday morning, you can come down to the computer lab, a quarter of eight before school, you'll see 13, 15, 20 teachers in there, learning more about technology. We have 10 teachers who have blogs right now, thanks to Julie and Nancy teaching everybody how to use blogs. We have a plan for the next four, Nancy and Julie have a plan for the next four or five weeks. But the commitment, you know, what you saw was Nancy's video in her class, but the commitment to integrating technology has become a building-wide initiative, and everybody is on board. And I, I need to thank the town for the funds that came in the, in the capital budget last year and this year for the iPad carts, and also the superintendent for having faith in us that we would go ahead and we would fully embrace this initiative. But most of my thanks goes to the amazing, incredible teachers at Chaker Lane School who have really made this happen for students, and I hope you two guys are ready for when these two, when these kids come, because this is first grade. You know, imagine what these kids are going to be doing when they're in second grade.
I didn't even know the four-finger cheat.
I didn't either. I learned that for a year. Nancy, anything you want to add? Anything you want to say? Come on up.
Nancy, come on up, please, because it's not a grilling, but we would like to tell us a couple of things about the program, your thoughts on it. Come on up over here, please.
You have to come over to the mic.
It's a microphone. Sure. Well, the reason I made the video is I was taking a technology course, and so as a project, I decided to make the video, and the kids were very willing. I mean, no scripts or anything, they're just eager to show their skills. They like, like anyone, they like to show off. But it's funny, sitting here and having that video played brings me back to a couple of years ago. I remember coming to a meeting, and Mr. Clancy, you had showed a video of kids in Canada doing wikis, and it really struck me when I saw that, and I was like, wow, look what those kids can do. So, it's, I didn't think about that till I was just sitting here like, oh, now we're moving in that direction, so, pretty cool.
Do you have any questions? No, I just think it's great. They did a great job, and I learned a few things, too, so.
The iPads are utilized so much in the building. Just in first grade alone, we have, our iPad cart is, we have 30 iPads, and we've split them up so that each classroom has five, and we use those daily for literacy centers. And then, we each partner up with another teacher, and we have 10 twice a week for math. And then, once a week, we get all of the iPads, we can do a whole group lesson. And then, once a week, we, on Wednesdays, we set them up in the art room so that we can all go in and out to do lessons in there as well. So, they are utilized constantly.
I put you on the spot with this, I apologize, because I know I didn't ask you to come prepared to answer some questions like this, but certainly we saw the children using them as they were. For children with some special needs, devices such as iPads, have you seen how it's helped them interface, I mean, not just with machines, but also with people, and perhaps learn concepts that were otherwise more difficult to instructive at all?
I would say absolutely. It is amazing to see how engaged learners become. The accessibility tools that are on the iPad are quite remarkable for students who are nonverbal especially. The, the way that it enhances your teaching is amazing, because all of a sudden you have this incredible visual image, especially with the, with the televisions, to just really bring a lot of things that you talk about to life. So, that's been great for all learners.
Now, anecdotal at best, but you were teaching first grade last year.
Yes.
Without these.
Yes.
And I teach it this year with them, and certainly each cohort's going to be different, but do you see some kind of qualitative and quantitative difference?
Well, I definitely see that when the students are engaged with the iPads, you have much better attention. The kids, they're naturals with this type of technology. Even this was, I think we filmed this in like February, March, and when I look at what they're doing now, they're using a lot of creative apps like Notability, and they're able to take pictures and bring the pictures in, and they're able to draw on it and word, well, word process on it. And now, they all know how to save it to Google Drive into their folder so that we can start making digital portfolios. So, it's pretty, it's pretty cool.
It's pretty amazing.
Thank you for coming. Well, first of all, thank you for doing it all.
No, no problem. Thank you.
Just before you, so, one of the concerns people had expressed before we purchased these, that kids would just be, they'd just be a passive device to the kids. It doesn't sound like at all that's the experience in terms of what's really happening with the introduction of the technology in the class.
Absolutely, and I think that there's different kinds of apps, there's like creativity apps where you, and productivity where you're asking them to make, to produce something. And then there are apps that give the students the information. A lot of the literacy apps that we use for like phonics-based learning, they're getting like repeated practice. It's easy to differentiate instruction with different apps. So, I think it's been really, really great.
Thanks, Rich. Anything else, Sam?
Nope. Thank you, Nancy.
And please thank the kids.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they don't mind showing it on.
They will.
Sure, we had a couple of principals very well entertained here. Okay, though. Kelly, want to get into business?
Sure, just a couple of comments before we move on, if that's all right. Now, two years ago, when, when I brought that video to the school committee, I remember looking at Rich, and at the end of it, we had a conversation, and it seemed like it was a far distance away in terms of coming to that point, but within a year and a half, we've, we've made it. In fact, I'm sure there, there are some things we're doing that perhaps are not, and that video was shot with a teacher who was the National Technology Teacher of the Year nationally, and I see what Nancy's doing in her classroom and other teachers are doing, and just very, very proud of what I see. I had an opportunity to be in Nancy's classroom a number of times this year, and I never forget the day I went in there and she was showing a video via iPad of communities and how they interact and communicate, and a bigger picture of ecosystems, and it was on gophers, which are a pest in Saskatchewan. And it was just really interesting and fascinating for me to watch the kids, or students more correctly, looking at this video and picking up far more the communication of gophers in this case. And the conversation, instead of being a narrow conversation about communities and ecosystems, became far more broad-based, and then I could just see the wheels turning and the connections in terms of how they're associating with pre-information that they've learned, which certainly is advantageous to long-term memory. And it just all started to package together. I mean, we've certainly done a lot of reading on how technology enhances learning and the rate of learning. And here we were... And here we were firsthand witnessing this. Again, this is what it's all about, taking risks, using best practice, doing research, and then seeing exactly what it does in terms of helping our students be engaged in learning. So again, thank you, Nancy. In terms of new business, Chairman Avella asked me to put on the agenda fingerprinting. I did provide a brief synopsis of the law that was introduced. And at this point in time, we are going to be expected to fingerprint new staff coming into the school district in September. What's interesting about this is we really don't have any direction yet in terms of who's doing it, how long it's going to take, and what the actual process is to get it done. We finally were at the stage of accomplishment in doing quarries, where I could have an answer pretty well immediately about the pertinent information we needed to okay an employee before they started work. This is going to be a whole different paradigm for us, because criminal record checks aren't done in ten minutes. It's also going to require, I don't know how they're going to do it, another division within the state to employ people that simply do that. Now, we've come a long way in terms of fingerprinting. You can do it electronically now, but that still takes time. My concern as a superintendent is that turnaround time and also the cost of doing fingerprinting. There's $35 for non-certified staff. In other words, staff that don't require certifications in order to be hired. And $55 for staff that are certified, updated every three years. It's not uncommon. There are a number of states in our nation that have required this for a number of years. But it is a change in the way we do business. And the biggest concern for me is there are times when we hire staff during the year where we don't have a lot of downtime. We need to get somebody in that classroom the next day. And we just need... And we will have alternate provisions to deal with those situations, with student quarries, obviously, in those situations. But I wanted to certainly make the full committee aware of that change in law that has been passed. And now, we're patiently awaiting to see how it's going to be actualized.
To be clear, it's Massachusetts State Law. All new employees by the start of school must be fingerprinted. And it's been a grace period for present employees. They don't have to be fingerprinted by one September. It is, as you said, $35 for non-certified folks working in the district, and 55 for certified professionals. And the state's solution to who pays for it is what?
They don't have a solution. Right now, it would come out of either the employee's pocket, or they made a statement at a meeting I was at a few months ago, that if the employer would like to pay, they're certainly welcome to do so. So definitely...
This is nascent stages for sure. And as you said, a lot of the processes and procedures are yet to be defined. We know some of the core pieces of that. I would ask the committee, we asked the superintendent, to find out what the budget impact would be for the town of Littleton to pay for this versus happening on the employees' back. We speak about unfunded mandates, and we've railed against them often enough. And now, for our employees, we're telling them, as condition of employment, you must do this, and by the way, pay for the privilege. And all can, it somewhat bothers them. So if you're all okay with that, that's what I would like to ask the superintendent to do.
For informational purposes at this point?
Information purposes at this point. What would be the budget impact that you would anticipate?
Because I guess that was going to be my question. You touched on most of it. Has the state... What has the state done with the teaching professionals in terms of informing them about the law and its requirements? Or is that left up to us to work with our local law? Well, they deal with the Massachusetts Teachers Association. They've certainly been briefed on it in terms of making this work. Obviously, it's going to come down to the system level. You know, having been involved in this before, you know, depending on where I've been, in Maine, it was a state-centered organization that did our fingerprinting for us. In other places I've been, the local police stations were involved, and were given a nominal fee for contributing. And that doesn't seem to be the direction that they're going.
Really, you've just got a little over three months to sort it out for new employees. Exactly. So it's not...
Can I ask a question? Is there some... I mean, is this a one-time thing? How often are they proposing to do this?
Well, it's not a one-time thing. It wouldn't be every three years. Right now, according to law, we're required to quarry employees every three years. So it would follow the same law. It varies, three to five years, depending on...
You wouldn't have to get fingerprinted every three years.
No, they would just run a check card.
Right, have to run the checks through the material.
Why should you have your fingerprints? They have them forever.
So it's concealed down the road, the fee might not be as high, because it wouldn't be the initial...
Right. And the efficiency would be there in terms of turnaround time also, hopefully. But they haven't let the contracts yet even to put the infrastructure in place for this requirement, have they? Not to my knowledge. I have not received anything indicating that is the case.
Thank you.
Anyway, just something that we felt you should know.
Hi. Chief Penner report?
And we're going to start off with Ethan's last official school report.
No way.
Ethan, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Tonight, start up at the high school. Obviously, the big event this week being the NIAS accreditation committee being at the high school. I believe later in the superintendent's report, there's a small discussion about that. But it was a pretty good week. We had a lot of students being shadowed throughout the course of a week. I can think of three or four classes in which there was a shadow in my classroom. Students such as myself were giving tours all week, mainly just Monday and Tuesday and that type of thing. It didn't disrupt the flow of the school too much, although it was definitely different, seeing a lot of new faces in the school that I think a lot of people were a little speculative of earlier in the week. Also happening this week, I want to thank everybody, mainly Mrs. Bridge and Mrs. Settlein, for putting together our spring concert. Took place on Tuesday night. It included our Littleton High School Band's, the song that we dedicated to the victims of the Boston bombing. And I believe we are going to try to make that concert available on LCTV coming up soon, as soon as we figure out all the logistics associated with that. Also, this week and next week, it seems to be some sort of exams going on at all the schools right now. But AP exams are taking place at the high school. Started this week, they'll continue all the way through next week. We have, we had many students take their SAT tests last Saturday. Overall, people left feeling pretty confident it was the day after prom. So as confident as you can feel taking a four-hour standardized test the day after prom. And also, on that note, I'd like to thank the junior class officers, Ms. Augen, and everybody who went into planning for prom last Friday at the Tewksbury Country Club. It was a lot of fun, especially, you know, for us seniors, kind of the last chance we get to do something like that. And we appreciated all the work that went into it. Couple sports highlights. The boys' baseball team is still going strong at 10-1. Our boys' lacrosse team is 11-2, and those are kind of the main highlights on the guy's side, whereas for the girls, the girls' track team is still undefeated in their league schedule. They were hoping to finish off that undefeated season yesterday, but their meet got postponed next Thursday against Murdock, and that will be the final track meet here on our new track of the season. There are upcoming meets for both the boys and the girls. This weekend, they have their district events, and next Monday will be the leagues. Down at the middle school, the country expo will be tomorrow morning in the sixth-grade classrooms, and I believe it starts at nine. It's nine to 10:30.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Also, this week and next week, MCAS is taking place at the middle school. I believe it was seventh graders yesterday and today, and I believe it's eighth grade next week. And nature's classroom is coming up down at the middle school for our sixth graders. They start on the 20th. And at our elementary schools, there's an art show May 21st at 5:00 PM at the Russell Street School, as well as looking down, looking down the road a little bit, but given this is my last address, you knew I had to mention that there's a band concert. The Russell Street Band concert will be on June 4th. That will be taking place at the high school auditorium. And once again, MCAS is taking place this week and next week down at Russell Street School. That's what I have for you this evening.
An update on our Director of People Services search. It is going as planned, so to speak. And Mr. Fairey, I just had a conversation with you today, and it's my understanding that they'll be reviewing, or interviewing more correctly next week. And I'm looking forward to taking a look at the candidates that they recommend for the second interview with myself and the admin team.
Do you see a number of applications?
We have 32 total. And I'm looking at, hopefully, having three to five brought to me. Item three, thank you for offering to have an additional school committee meeting in June. We picked the date Thursday, June 13th. That will allow us to take care of business that we really need to take care of prior to December.
Yeah, we put Wednesday and Thursday. I think Thursday ended up being the only day that this facility was...
That's correct.
So Thursday...
There was a conflict on the 20th with eighth grade graduation. So you all can make that Thursday? Okay.
All right, thank you.
School choice recommendations as per policy and state statute. You have before you this evening recommendations from the administrative team. Interesting this year in terms of our senior class, we have the largest number of choice in students that we've seen in our district. We have 14 that are leaving. Let's just get back to the right page here. There we go. What we've tried to do here, you can see that we have quite a span with no recommendation for school choice students. And that's because our class sizes are of a number that our current staffing levels can handle. And we wanted to make sure we tipped the balance. Kindergarten grade one, though, we feel we can take four students in each grade, and that will allow us to, again, have that consistent number in grades as we move forward. Then we're very cautious, nine to 12, though we feel we can accommodate 16 more students. To be transparent in terms of the past, we've never ever filled up all the seats that we've opened in high school. It'd be nice to, but we haven't. So, you know, if we get eight or so, that would probably be a normal expectation in terms of previous history. Please remember that part of the income that we take in has been put into revenue in terms of how we pay for some of our teaching staff. So we want to make sure that we keep that revenue stream going as we continue on. The other pages that I've included include choice out. You can see a number of students and what schools they are going to. And I also thought it was important that you had an April summary of enrollment indicating the number of students that we have and the choice students that we have per grade. And you can see with the results in front of you that 14 was definitely the highest number that we've had in terms of students choicing in.
Just for OOD, is that out of district?
Placement, that's right.
Okay.
You were noting here, Kelly, that we're 14 current school choice students are graduating in a couple of weeks.
Correct.
And then, based on the numbers you're projecting here, if we fill all four kindergarten grade one slots, which is a reasonable expectation, and then we get about half of what you projected across nine, 10, 11, and 12, we'd be right in that 12 to 14 range.
Correct.
So about one for one, based on where we're at today and where we expect to be next year, not a whole lot higher, not a whole lot lower.
Exactly.
So how did you pull the math? We have 80 school choice in right now in total across the district.
Correct.
Big percentage.
Definitely have increased over years. I have to tell you, our traffic in terms of requests for school choice has certainly been increasing with my time. Two-year, I guess I have a two-year span in terms of history, but we're definitely getting far more calls. In fact, we started getting calls in November, believe it or not, right through, from pre-K through 12. So it is, we are picking up more traffic, so to speak.
It serves as a good buffer, too. So, you know, it's not exactly the day in, day out. It's almost 1,600 children in the district. And that buffer, that helps.
And we've made this statement before, but if you look at history of the school district since the mid to late 80s to now, our deviation is around plus or minus 30, which isn't a lot. So it's nice to see that consistency.
Do you have to vote on the number?
As per statute, yes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to open up 24 school choice slots.
Second. Which means second. Any further discussion? Hey, pose a favor.
Aye.
Posed. We'll save that discussion, which I'll put later on when I talk to you about.
Safety and security update. Darryl and Steve, you've had a very productive... All your meetings are productive, but last meeting was interesting, because you were learning a little more about a new way of doing business. So I don't want to steal the opportunity for you to talk about it. You'll notice that it's not under subcommittee reports, and it was just a catch when we were having discussions last week. When we reorganized last year, we actually took safety and security off the subcommittee list, and we had an ad hoc member serving on it. So it remains in the subcommittee anymore. That's why we put it under the superintendent's report. So, Darryl?
Yes, sir. No, it was very good. We had a presentation on the, informational presentation on the Alice system, which I did not write the acronym down to keep it on the tip of my tongue here.
Give it away.
So nobody's going to bail me out here or spell it out for folks. There. And basically, it brought us to the point that it's time for us to reevaluate and update our emergency response procedures that are in place at the schools. And so what we'd like to do is have Pablo come to one of our future meetings here. We'll try to schedule it so there's time specifically locked out. It takes probably about an hour presentation there, so that we can get, everybody can come up to speed on what the program is, what are, you know, what are some of the advances in the sort of state of response and procedures. And then, you know, I guess I'd, at that point, make a recommendation that we task the administration to develop some recommendations for how they, you know, certain aspects of that might be brought into the community here. It was very informative. It takes all of the speculation of what you read in the papers about what response teams, you know, responses are there, as well as how it should be adapted to a local environment. So I think that would be very good to bring it, you know, as an informational piece here, and then sort of get the sense of the committee on how we want to proceed for tasking the administration at that point.
Darryl, alert lockdown in form counter evacuation.
Thank you. It's a catchy phrase, but it doesn't roll off your tongue. And the presentation was very good. Like I said, it clears up a lot of misconceptions about what people have. So I think from that perspective of being informative would be very valuable to all of us.
Anybody want to start? Any questions on that?
What does Alice develop?
No candy.
Darryl, were you going to give an update on the CPR progress as well?
No, why don't you cover?
Well, John Aronson's not here, so I don't have all the detailed information. But the Safety and Security Council had also recommending, recommended teaching the students at the high school basic CPR procedures, and so that is moving forward, and that's going to be in place, I believe, in the fall to teach freshmen and... to teach freshmen and juniors basic CPR as well as all the staff. So that was another checkmark for the Safety and Security Council. And John Harrington is the principal of the high school to get that program.
Yeah, the tenet date was twenty-ninth of May for training forty of the teachers.
That's excellent.
Yeah, during the early release PD, some of the activities.
Who will do the training?
The fire department is, through their EMTs, is setting that up.
Yes, yeah, that's great. On the same note, I had the pleasure of attending a Nemlok concert, or conference more correctly, with the Chief of Police Deputy Chief, Fire Department Chief, Steve Mark. And again, it was such a pleasure to have everybody at the table that really is involved in any emergency within this town. And, you know, it'll take a whole day in to vote to school district business. You know, we're just, we're very, very fortunate to have the leadership that we have in this town. It's a very valuable conference.
Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council.
Thank you.
They're a very good, they're an extremely organized group of individuals that go also to national conferences and learn best practices across the country and then bring it back into districts.
NIAS visit. We.
I'm going to hitch on this one. NIAS stands for?
Man, oh man. National Association of Schools and Colleges. There you go. How about NASDAQ? No. We were very fortunate to have a team of sixteen people come into our high school. And it's really, for me and for any administrator, teacher, it is a bit daunting to have sixteen people walking around and really dissecting what you do, you know, within your school, within your classrooms. I have to say, right from day one, there was just such an acceptance of the sixteen people into the school. And it was just so nice to see. There was very little apprehension. By the second day, I don't think there was any apprehension at all. Teachers embraced the concept, you know, definitely the administration did. Our students were wonderful. In fact, when they were given their final briefing, which was, it was a very short briefing and for good reason, because there's a whole process that they need to go through now before they release a report. But one of the things that they said, and there were nods by all sixteen people, is within the four days that they were here, they had actually developed connections with our students. Can you imagine? And they didn't have a lot of time to do that, believe me. But our students, it's real credit to what we do. I mean, our students were friendly. They went out of their way to make them feel welcome. They had an opportunity to shadow some of our students. And it was just like they were part of our staff for the four days that they were here. So I'd really like to thank our teachers, all of our staff, from our custodians to our food service people, administration for making them feel welcome. Our PTA put on a teacher appreciation lunch and had a spread for the visiting team also. And it really was evident, evident to them that we really have a true community school. So very proud, another very proud moment for me as a superintendent. Now, what did they say during their report? They obviously didn't give us any written copies. And I know Mike was sitting beside me, so I can always rely on Mike to help me out here if there's an acronym, acronym that I stumble across. As you know, there are seven areas from the reading that you have done, seven standards that they take a look at. The first standard, core values, beliefs, and learning expectations. They look at a variety of things. How twenty-first century learning opportunities are intertwined or interwoven within the curriculum. They're very pleased to see what we were doing at the high school in terms of making those connections within the established curricula. We have academic, school-wide rubrics that have been completed. They're at the initial stages of implementation, very supportive of the rubrics that we've created. The recommendation, and again, it was just nothing written at this point in time, but it was evident and certainly evident to me when looking at the self-studies that we still need to develop social and civic school-wide rubrics that need to be looked at, agreed on, and then implemented as we move forward. Second standard, curriculum. We have a consistent framework with our web-based curriculum mapping tool. They're very evident that we have vertical and horizontal alignment. In terms of a recommendation, as we continue the mapping process, we need to tease out a little more than they were able to see. Activities that would depict higher order thinking, critical thinking, and problem solving. And that's something that we can certainly do quite easily as we are working on our maps. I like to think they're in green print rather than a blueprint so that teachers, when they're teaching and looking at assessments, assessments for learning, they can certainly tweak what they're doing to make sure that they're meeting all students' needs. Also, under curriculum comes resources. They noticed, not only when they looked at our budget, but through conversations with staff, that we haven't had definitive dollar amounts allotted to those lines for a number of years. As a school committee, if you recall, when we were downsizing, we had stimulus money that came in to the district through the federal government. That money was used for resources. As a result, it was taken out of budget. They were pleased to find out, though, that when needs arise, we were able to reallocate money and take care of it. But another recommendation would be to, through time, throughout time, reestablish those lines so there's a definitive plan in place in terms of a fiscal plan. And that, again, was fully expected in terms of moving forward. They also know that there's a, there's a finite amount of resources or money and that we have to make decisions based on priorities. So they're very cognizant of that. They also realize that we're at the cusp of making a decision, like all school districts are across the nation, in terms of are the publishers ready to enroll online resources? And how dependable will they be? Are they going to be, you know, what is the cost over time, et cetera? So we're kind of in limbo right now, trying to make sure we make the best decision we can. We all know textbooks aren't cheap. And the wear and tear on them through normal use, if you have five years out of a textbook, six years, you're doing well. Some of our textbooks, we certainly have a lot longer lifespan than that. Instruction, they witness student engagement within classrooms. Students moving into the domain of being in charge of their own learning, which is our ultimate goal. They're, they're very pleased with the correlation of curriculum and the linkage to actual classroom instruction, which is very important. Teachers are obviously reflective about their instructional strategies. Technology, it was evident that integration of technology is sporadic due to the limitations of hardware and infrastructure, which we certainly have a plan for as we move forward. They were pleased to see the changes, though, within a two, two-and-a-half-year period in terms of how more teachers are feeling comfortable and demonstrating proficiency with using technology within their respective classrooms. Excited about the plan that we've mapped out for the high school in terms of BYOD and having an infrastructure robust enough to support that type of approach. Assessment of and for student learning is the fourth standard. Assessment strategies are well-developed and link to twenty-first century learning. Evidence of common assessments, which is very important. Pleased that we're moving to a student parent portal for student assessment as a result of our new SIS system, Student Information System, that we're implementing as of next year. We've been busy training everybody in it, and it has been an extensive training, to say the least, but that's time well spent, I can assure you. We have a well-defined process for using assessments to guide both instruction and curriculum development. Standard five, school culture and leadership. Very positive and engaging school culture. They also commented on the confidence that they saw in our students in terms of communication skills, presentation skills, and knowledge and articulation. And that really stood out. And for me, it was an affirmation, because I spoke about that a number of times at the school committee level. Very evident that there are positive relationships with students and staff, a lot of informal communication going on. And not only teachers, with all of our staff within the school. It is a, it is a real family atmosphere. Safe, with a safe, positive, respectful, and supportive culture. Learning is a shared responsibility, and we are fostering student responsibility for One thing that came out when they were talking about the recommendation, we have an advisory component to the school day, but it's only five minutes long. They are recommending that we lengthen that time and develop a curriculum to go along with the advisory time so we can take care of some of these skill sets in terms of civic responsibility, et cetera, character education. Great recommendation. Sixth standard, school resources for learning. Evidence of intervention strategies for students. Efficient staffing for support services. There was a discussion, however, about the possibility of adding an adjustment counselor to the table. We've had discussions about that around our leadership table and also at the school committee level. And again, finite funds, it's a matter of setting priorities. Just so you know, as a school committee, we have been monitoring that situation in terms of referrals on a yearly basis for the last three years. And without having the data in front of me, red flags haven't gone off. So are we where we need to be? You know, we'd like more support, but we're managing. And maybe there are other ways of securing that support through a partnership with mental health services or whatever. We need to, the high school administration, my recommendation to them and their improvement plan would be to search out potential partnerships where we could perhaps give them some space in lieu of getting a decreased payment for services offered and rendered. Seventh standard, community resources for learning. They were very complimentary of our program diversity that we offer in our high school. Definite sense of pride from our students, staff, and community. And again, watching the teacher appreciation lunch was, was really nice to see the community coming in and supporting our staff. In the end, they concluded with the fact that they had a wonderful week. They learned a lot themselves. And what's wonderful about these experiences is it's a two-way street. They're coming in to evaluate programs in our school, school culture, et cetera, but at the same time, they're coming away with the ideas that they can actually implement into their own schools. Mike, do you have anything else you'd like to offer?
I mean, you could tell from the presentation, it was brief, but you could see that there was a lot of head nodding on both the, from sort of our side in terms of accepting the recommendations and the comments that they had. But as the Chair of the NIAS Study Committee was speaking, you could see that his team felt like they had seen what they came to see. In a lot of the recommendations they made were very general and out past what we're already doing. Very little was done that was specific to, hey, there's a real problem here that you need to address. Now, as Kelly said, there will be a much more extensive report that will go into much more detail. But you could definitely get the sense that they felt like this was a high-functioning school district and that the recommendations that they make were going to be on the margins of, you know, incremental improvements that we're always striving for, which I thought was very positive and was something that I was hoping to see out of that, and I felt like I really did. And I think the other thing that I would like to say is that, obviously, the last four days or five days that they were in here was a culmination of a significant effort. And it's hard to overstate how much of the effort had already been done prior to that team arriving in terms of the self-studies and the preparation by the admin team and the teachers at the high school. And the benefit from having gone through that, even if we didn't get a report after that, there would still be a significant benefit from having gone through this.
True.
So, you know, I felt like it was a worthwhile exercise. I know it was an exhausting exercise for the high school, but I feel like you could tell that they were happy that they had done it, that they felt it was worthwhile. So it was very significant.
Great. Thank you.
You know, I sat in on the, I guess it was the opening panel discussion where we highlighted our strengths and weaknesses, you know, out of the self-study to the committee here. And I didn't hear any surprises in terms of their summary assessment of where some strengths and weaknesses that we might need to address. Was there anything that caught you by surprise out of their? I mainly go into how thorough and self-ass, you know, self-aware the self-assessment was.
I'm glad you asked that question, and the answer to that is no, there wasn't. So that was kind of an affirmation for me. Yeah, it, just to comment about self-study, though, it's really, it's really interesting the way it's designed, and it has to be designed that way because of limitation of time. But you divide your staff up into groups, and they go off and they look at the seven standards, and they do a self-analysis, and come to a consensus within that group. But there's, there's not time to bring that back to the full staff, educate them, and then come to consensus. So what happens, part of the NIAS team's job is to take a look at their self-study and bring perception and reality closer together. And I found, you know, when I read the self-studies, I knew some things were more perception than reality. And it was, I guess, a limitation of the process. But I was pleased to see at the end, and definitely without mentioning anything to anybody, that they were able to tease those things out, and their observations brought perception and reality very close together, in my opinion.
Paulson? Ethan?
Paulson, thank you. As you said, sixteen members, it's New England Association of Schools and Colleges that we're a member of. It's accreditation process every ten years. So folks are probably pretty happy that they got a ten-year respite for now. But we had representatives, so folks would know, from New Hampshire, Connecticut, and then in Massachusetts, east on the Cape, west out to Pittsfield. And then pretty much of the sixteen, the various disciplines are represented, certainly the maths and sciences, the teachers, the social studies, the humanities. Let's see, we had special educators, we had counselors, principals.
Word language.
Yep, languages, that's right, yes. Principal, Director of Charter School. So it was a very broad-based expertise, if you will, that came in. So I don't know that there's anything that you could slip by them, just one of them is going to have an expertise in that area, that we'll see. And to Darryl's question and your answer, from what you've related here and Mike, and certainly from that in-brief on Sunday afternoon to the team, the teachers and the staff members all who briefed in them as to where you felt you were as a high school, where the programs were, where they felt they were at, and then what the team actually observed as they went through that, that there is that direct correlation is good. We had a saying in the Air Force, situation awareness, ninety percent of them just know where you're at. So.
True.
So that the staff understands that. And certainly, please pass along our thanks to the entire staff. We know, we've been talking about that probably public meeting now for eighteen months at least, on and off as time has gone by. So that Principal Harrington and the rest of the staff have been working even longer than that. And then certainly, as that peaked as we approached this past week. It was extra work, well and above pure instructional time with the students and preparation time. So I understand yeoman's work by everybody at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I'll give one last point, too. It's important to know that those sixteen people had no relationship with each other before they met. And it was really interesting for me to watch that team evolve within that four-day period. They're all strangers. So not only did they have to sit down and get to work immediately once they arrived, but they had to get to know each other. And when you're delivering your reports for the different standards, you have to do so in a fashion that's going to get consensus. So it's an interesting process for them as well.
Storm and form and norm in a very short period of time.
When can we expect the final report from them?
Sometime in August.
Oh, that's pretty fast.
Yeah, so we're looking forward to seeing it. Now, I guess to explain the process, Darryl, the Chair and the Co-Chair of the committee will be finalizing the report and then sending it to the NIAS committee as a whole. And they'll review the information, make any edits that they feel are necessary, and then bind it and bring it back to the school and school committee. I have an item on my agenda today, or tonight more correctly, the three-year maintenance plan. I took an opportunity to take a look at what Steve's been working on, and it's coming along quite nicely. I just didn't feel that it was time to bring it to the school committee meeting tonight. There were a few areas that I would like to see more details on in terms of costing, et cetera, and projected costs. So next meeting, we'll have it at the meeting for first glance, so to speak. The only other item I have on my agenda this evening would be Starbase update, and I'm going to ask Principal Vezidnul to do that for me. going to ask Principal Visidnall to do that for me.
Thanks, Kelly. Superintendent asked me to brief the committee about our experience with Starbase Academy. This evening, we are lucky to have 24 students from Russell Street School participating in a pilot program with the Department of Defense Starbase Academy program. And for those of you that may not have heard of this program, it's spread throughout the nation. The first one in Massachusetts opened earlier this year at Hanscom Air Force Base and it's extremely competitive. It's geared towards our fifth grade students across the state. The goal of the program is to motivate students to explore educational and career, careers that are in the STEM fields. And it was extremely competitive for us to even get one pilot class in this year. They were filled up very early. Many of those classes came from urban districts, the Maldens and districts closer to Boston. They took the, obviously, the base schools first, the Hanscom School and the Lincoln Schools from right around them. I worked with Dr. Holden, Kelly worked with us from Starbase, and Kathy Brewer, one of our fifth grade teachers who teaches science, is leading this pilot. They've been to Starbase for, it's a five-day program, five full days, where students are out of school and they do full science, technology and math immersion activities. So they've been for two days. So I can't speak in-depth about the program, we haven't had the opportunity to evaluate it. I can tell you that I was there the first day, for a good part of the day. Our students were highly, highly engaged. The way the program works, I'll just read a tiny bit from their marketing to give folks a little bit of a background and then I'll talk about our students' experiences on the day I was there. This marketing material says, "The program engages students through inquiry-based curriculum with its hands-on, minds-on, experiential activities. They study Newton's laws, Bernoulli's principle, explore nanotechnology, navigation and mapping. They're captivated by engineering as they use the computer to design space stations, all-terrain vehicles and submersibles. Math is embedded throughout the curriculum and students use metric measurement, estimation, calculation, geometry and data analysis to solve questions. Teamwork is stressed as they work together to explore, explain, elaborate and evaluate concepts." So as you can imagine, it was challenging when we heard we could only send one class this year. So the first challenge for us was to figure out how are we going to find only 24 students out of 129 to go. Children filled out applications, quote-unquote, "applications" to talk about, you know, what does science mean to me, why might I be interested in going to this program? And then students were selected randomly and ensuring that we had a heterogeneous group. Starbase, by its doctrine, is geared towards targeting students who may be less advantaged when it comes to STEM careers and STEM education, so we wanted to make sure that we had a heterogeneous group and we were able to accomplish that. They are highly, highly engaging. All of these students, I had to come up with call signs before they went, so they creatively came up with call signs. The instructors are, at this location, are all civilian-based, they all have call signs. So when I got there around lunchtime the first day, I experienced what it was like to get on a live military base, so that took a little bit of, a little more time than I expected. But it's quite a program. They were watching a video and having lunch and then they got into some hands-on activities. And the final activity they did that day that I was a part of, students actually sat in a computer lab and used full live computer-aided design software that, you know, engineers would use and were guided step-by-step through creating a small space station module that by the end of their five-day program will be sent to a $35,000 3D printer to be created and they'll take that home as a souvenir. So it's a highly engaging program. The goal being that because we're in on the first year, if this works well and we're a pilot community, the goal would be to try to have all of our students go in the future. In talking to the folks at Starbase, they target five classrooms as being the max they can take. We're scheduled to have six fifth-grade classrooms next year. I've talked to Dr. Holden about that. It's a little bit premature to be looking at scheduling next year, but that's obviously the goal, that if this goes well, we would try to invite all of our fifth graders to participate in a program like this. Mrs. Brewer has said, you know, the curriculum is extremely lofty, more challenging than any of the curriculum that we offer. It is tied to the national standards, so it ties nicely to our curriculum, but it's extremely challenging. So, you know, the goal is to inspire and encourage and enrich what we're doing here. And the other thing that, you know, to make people aware, the last time I talked to Dr. Holden, with everything that's going on federally with funding, the Starbase is at risk. One of the things that's nice is the Starbase program is free. All we pay for is the transportation to get students there. The entire program is free to the district and so, other than students needing to figure out what they miss and us sort of juggling around their academics, it's a really nice program because it's, has no cost basis for us. However, because of some of the things that are going on nationally in the fiscal budget, that program is at risk. So hopefully it will exist next year as it exists now and that's something to keep in mind as well. But preliminarily, we're very impressed with the program. Mrs. Brewer is very impressed with the program and students are reporting that they really enjoy the program. So that's where we're at at this point. I'm happy to take, you know, any questions.
What was the response of the students? How did they like?
The day I was there was the first day, so it was a tiny bit slower first thing in the morning because the other thing is there's a pre-assessment and a post-assessment because the folks at Starbase obviously are very focused on what students are learning and making sure that it's not activity for activity's sake. So they had started with a pre-assessment and whatnot, but in the afternoon, they really enjoyed that computer. And I'll tell you, I'm a techie. I was a web developer for a while in between my educational career and that CAD software took a little getting used to. And they were pretty clear in saying, you know, most of us with computer software, we want to just start clicking around and learning. And they were saying to the kids, "If you start clicking around too much, we'll not be able to get you back to where you need to be." So we did go through that development process of that piece together as a group. But one of the culminating activities in their week is they bring them back to that software and let them do whatever they want with it. But in that initial stage where they all create that, it was a group activity. And the kids really had a good time. I mean, this was serious software they were developing and, you know, if you have any experience with that kind of software, you can spin this 3D thing around and it's pretty cool. So they're excited about that. And, you know, there was all kinds of hands-on activities. And the principals themselves weren't all that new to students, but the way they were being taught in hands-on ways and they were working in teams and I tweeted some pictures out about it earlier. And when the program's over, we'll have some kids come in and talk about their experiences, you know, as we've had previously. But I think you'll find that they're pretty excited about the things that they're doing there.
Were there other schools there at the same time or did you have to run and play?
No, it's one classroom and, you know, they can only manage 25 children at a time. We sent 24, that's four students from each of our six classrooms. And it's, there were one, two, three, there were either three or four of their instructors and we sent one of our full-time classroom teachers and an assistant. So the ratio is pretty serious as far as a small number of students to each adult.
Since they only sent about a fifth of the class, oh great. Any plans to leverage with the children that went and learned?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. We talked about that. The fifth grade team, the teachers played an integral role in how we were going to select these students. We wanted to make sure it was fair. We wanted to, I fully expected, you know, some disappointment with students and some disappointment with families. You know, it's an exciting program. And so we talked a lot about that and we talked about how we could have another learning experience for these students to come back and be able to share with their classmates and either present in some ways or reteach in some ways. We all know the epitome of great learning is to be able to reteach to someone else. And so we do expect to offer some of those opportunities to students when they come back.
You mentioned that they were doing software manipulation and the like. What do you need from us to help you?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
You mentioned that they were doing software manipulation and things such as that.
Software manipulations, I said, yeah.
Using CAD.
Yeah.
So what do you need from us to help?
Help in what way?
Help you get the children to leverage them, what they've learned.
Oh, well, that particular piece I think might be tough. That's pretty lofty. That, I mean, that is, that's-
Well, let me help you here. Sort through with the superintendent what we may be able to help you.
Yeah.
So you can better leverage the 24 children that went across the entire grade.
Absolutely. I just mean, that's a $35,000 printer and pretty serious software.
Sure itself, certainly a very good-sized refrigerator at that.
Yeah, but I appreciate that and we will, we'll work on that. But we do expect to try to get those kids to be able to-
Why is the fifth grade targeted?
You know, that's the age that they've targeted, I think, heading into middle school when students are starting to think about selecting classes and thinking about STEM careers and STEM, and STEM education. And again, in their, in their charge, they're ideally targeting students who might not think that way otherwise. So as students are getting to select courses, they want to get them excited about those educational opportunities and careers.
It's a big deal across DOD. It's an identified shortfall across the entire nation as far as when it comes to STEM education and the department's made a commitment to that. The level of commitment, the commander of Hanscom, the overall thing, actually resides at Wright Patterson in Dayton, Ohio. He came out for the dedication ceremony along with Lieutenant Governor Tim Murray. So it is a big deal to, obviously, the Department of Defense and then certainly to the state for folks such as that to give, it was roughly about a two-hour thing for that dedication process to come out. So that we're using it is absolutely fantastic and that we can spread it now with the other children would be even better. So let us know how we can help you spread it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, Kelly, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, interested citizens?
Okay, before we get down into subcommittee reports, let's go ahead. PMBC, have we got to talk anything which is not here, so?
Well, I was just, I mean, it's out of the PMBC's hands now, but it was part of what they had done and that was the track and the fact that-
Go ahead and address it now, that place, yeah.
We've officially had the track turned over to the school district and part of that responsibility is obviously making sure that the expectations are clear to our community so that we can preserve the track and have all the activities on it be safe. We have put up some signs depicting what appropriate use is. We still though, however, need to reach our broader community. There's still a learning curve that I don't think we've reached yet. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful facility, it's an attraction for our community, but we need to somehow get more information out there in terms of what you can use on the track and what you can't. For example, bicycles, the track isn't designed to be riding bicycles on it. And so what I've asked Mike Lynn to do, our athletic director, is write me up a blurb with the rules on it and we'll have the principals send it home in their weekly newsletter. We'll put it on our webpage. And I'm also recommending that we put that piece on LCTV also. It's more of an education component than, you know, people just doing what they want. People are so used to riding bicycles on pavement, et cetera, that I just, I really believe there isn't a transference that, you know, this is much more than pavement. We really need to get the message out.
Can we also reach out to the town-side website, like Park and Rec or something, to have that also posted on their pages?
It's a good idea.
What about the independent?
We can certainly have them cover it.
Would it be appropriate, I know that, like I heard about the school-wide meetings at Russell Street all the time at my house, rave reviews, they're well-received.
Kids are great.
But I know that there's some things that are talked about there and maybe if we educated the kids directly, they might be the ones saying, "No, Dad, we can't do that. We were told you can't bring your bike to the track. Everybody knows that, knock it off." You know, so maybe if we just do some of that, that might help too. I think, especially at the elementary school, because, you know, they're the ones who might be using it for non-standard purposes because they're looking for that open space.
Those are good suggestions. Well, certainly, I take that advice. You know, just a comment about the track. Every now and again, I venture down with my runners-on to check out what's happening at the middle school in Russell Street and I always go over to the track and take a look at it and walk around it a few times and I have to tell you, it's just incredible in terms of the cushioning that you feel when you're on the track and doing a few laps. So it's a real treat and it's definitely a very nice addition to our town. Facility that is well-used. I'm impressed with the number of people that I see on the track throughout the day and evening.
Anything on budget?
Nope.
Passed.
Well, yeah, actually I do want to say, yeah, town meeting, the budget passed, the overall budget for the town passed and obviously the school portion of it passed. And as always, just like to thank the town for their support. It was a very quick process there. I think the information that we put out there resonated with the community and as always, we got tremendous amount of support, both that and on the capital budget as well. So as always, very thankful to the community for coming out to town meeting and voting to support the schools.
Segue in somewhat on budget, school choice, total enrollment. We've talked on the periphery previously about the 40B project, 190 or so units, the exact number, one, two and three bedrooms to be determined. And whatever that ratio ends up being, that has some impact on children, we should think. I'd like to ask Darryl, if he can begin, a little bit more deep exploratory methods on this, as to what we may actually see. And not only that we may see another 10, 15, 20, 100 students, is what might the distribution be and what might we have to do in terms of resources and then actually funding those resources? So if we use the summer months, perhaps get that, because there's no shovels in the ground yet for 15 rate road. So certainly, there's going to be no children this school year from that project at least.
Right. I think they're planning on trying to get the septic treatment plan in this summer. So I think, but their major milestone is that they're targeting.
Do we have a tentative completion date on that project? Is that announced or?
As Darryl's just said, it's sketchy as to what we've learned as a community, but the wastewater treatment facility that Darryl mentions would be the first thing. I can't even remember how big it's going to be. Do you remember how big it is?
No.
And it's going to eventually serve.
Well, it'll serve the 190 units, which is, and then the 22 house development that they're going to put in, so.
The size of it is good enough for at least double of the planned units that are going to go in the area. So it's a good-sized facility. And frankly, I'll, I would take instructor, but then follow on. But at least the good news, we know this coming school year, it's no impact. So it's no impact on the 14 budget. It may, in the backside of the 15 budget, become an impact. That's where we've got to have awareness to.
All right.
Before we go into policy, we've heard a lot of activities and Ethan was giving his piece of the meeting here. See a lot of things going on in the town. This particular Saturday is going to be very busy in the town and I just wanted to bring up a couple if I may. Not necessarily school committee activities, but certainly the activities in the town and things that people participated in. The garden club, it's their major fundraiser, they're going to be on the common. If you've driven by the common, you've seen a tent out there, it's Rotary Club and the Shelter Box for emergency temporary shelter for around the world. The fire department has spaghetti dinner, town elections. So it's going to be one busy Saturday in our town. And the following week, Relay for Life, so speaking of the track, let's remember that also, the Relay for Life, historically now it's into the sixth year, is that right? Did I do, remember correctly?
I believe so.
Certainly, it's a town tradition now, so that'll be a week from tomorrow. So lots going on in the town, get out and enjoy it, participate in that. Okay, now do you want to put us to sleep?
I got circa.
Oh, boy.
All right.
How come the bag's already opened?
TV guy.
Light you a little better now.
It's going to take more than good lighting.
All right, so let me catch the first two that I'm going to have for recommendations rescind, which is FAE, Facility Development Goals exhibit. It's an exhibit, it's not really meant to be part of policy there. And then the other policy, FB, Facilities Planning, it doesn't really provide any guidance. It merely restates the town's charter to the PMBC, which really, I'm not sure why, that's a school policy piece there and actually our appointment. It doesn't really provide any guidance there, so I'm going to recommend that those two be rescinded. And then the rest of them are actually very straightforward on this piece here. The first one is Policy FAE, Facility Development Goals. It's basically a current policy and provides the outline of when we're going to, as we develop facilities. I recognize that we recently completed renovations to all of ours and we may not be relying on this policy for a while, but I think we should just leave it in place at this point. Policy FBF is our naming policy. And again, I think this is, it's current with the MASC recommendations in our city. Ours is a little- Ours is a little broader than theirs. Theirs applies to when you build a new facility, naming it. Ours applies to new and existing facilities here, and I think, didn't see any, any need for us to be changing our, any changes in that policy at this point. Policy FCB, Retirement of Facilities. Again, I recognize that all of our facilities are gainfully in use at this point, and we may not really be needing this policy, but I think it probably needs to probably stay in place, just to provide guidance if, if the situation does come up. The next block are the H ones, Negotiations. HA is Negotiation Goals, and this, again, just sets the guidance for the negotiation process. Just catch. Yeah, and that one is basically no changes from our, our current policy there. Negotiations, Legal Status. I want to catch one of them. It varies a little bit from the MASC recommendation in that the MASC recommendation actually delegates all of the responsibilities to the legal staff for it, whereas we use the legal staff as an advisor to negotiations there. So that was just the one thing that's different than the MASC, but it's the way we've been doing it consistently here, and I don't think we want to push that down to the legal staff to, to be responsible for that.
They're affected by more larger districts where-
I think so.
I mean, they just do it because they have the staffing to do it.
Yeah.
And the rest of the staff is so busy.
And their policy specifically allows delegating it to the legal staff to handle it. And that actually, may be actually covered under Negotiations, Legal Stats. I don't have the full text, Negotiating Agents, Policy HF, which is the next one, if you could just go on there. Yeah, and again, this, there's no, no change from our, from our existing one here, so I think our negotiation policies have been current, and they, and they seem to be serving us well here. The next block is Other Agency Relations here, Policy LA, Education Agency Relations Goals, which basically sets the goals of establishing relationships with other towns, other educational organizations. Again, I saw, there was no changes to this policy here. Policy LB, Relationship with Other School Districts. Again, it encourages the partnerships with other districts. And then Policy LDA encourages us to look at using internships and other means to work with education providers throughout the community. And again, it has been serving us well, and there was no changes to it. So this was a really easy block of policies at this point. So I'd appreciate a motion to accept as first reading that block of policies and as the first reading to rescind Policies FAE and FB. And if there's any questions, feel free to, to-
So do I actually want to rescind those two policies tonight?
The first reading to rescind, we'll rescind them, yeah. I've been doing two readings on both rescind and accept just for consistency.
Okay, so I make the motion that we have the first reading to rescind Policies FAE, FB, and the first reading of FA, FBF, FCB, HA, HB, HL, LA, LB, and LDA.
That's HF. So-
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to rescind the first two policies Daryl's referenced in the remaining list to accept as a first reading. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anima's?
Just a comment about the policy subcommittee. Daryl has done such a tremendous job in tracking the history of change. I have not been able to find anything like this anywhere else, and I've been deliberately looking, because I've been so impressed with what Daryl's come up with in terms of process. Today, I needed to look for something and trace the history of a policy. I just had to go on my webpage, go under Policies, and click on the history document, and I had the whole thing in front of my eyes. I have not found anybody that's replicated that process in the whole state to this point in time, so, thank you, Daryl, for doing a tremendous job.
Yes, I know we tease you, but I know what you've done for this, and thank you. Kelly's absolutely right.
Thank you.
All right, one last chance, folks. All right, before adjourning, I would like to once again recognize Ethan, thank him for his year of service here with us on the School Committee, wish him all the best in his future at the University of Massachusetts, Amherst, and study hard. I've heard he said this before, get a very good job, pay lots of social security taxes, and we're retiring soon. Seriously, thank you. At least the principal, Shayk Alaina, is retiring soon. Put that hair up.
Maybe not.
Hook it up. Chairman, please send executive session.
Yep, I'll make a motion that we adjourn from open session into executive session with no intention to return to open session for the purposes of contract negotiation discussion.
Second, motion made, seconded. Okay, Daryl?
Aye.
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 Aye. Four ayes. Thanks, folks.